Good evening, welcome to zoning board of appeals for October 12th, 2017. Few matters of housekeeping, if you have a cellphone, please turn it off or place on vibrate. If you wish to speak tonight in behalf of a petition either for or against, please come to the podium and sign your name and you'll be able to speak. We'll be taking the matters in order tonight. First, I would like to take a moment to welcome Mr. Mark Briere to the Lowell zoning board of appeals. Recent appointment, welcome, Mr. Briere.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Moving forward with our first order of business this evening, ZB dash two seventeen thirty-nine. Petition is a variance, Stephen Crowley on behalf of Adrian Paquette at one fifty-three River Road. The application for the petition is only one of appeals will hold a public hearing to all here, all interested persons relative to an application by Stephen Crowley on behalf of Adrian Paquette seeking variance approval for a property at one fifty-three River Road located in suburban, single-family zoning district. The applicant proposes to construct an attached garage and seek relief for front yard setback under section five point one and other relief that is required by the city of Lowell zoning ordinance. Petitioner here?
Yes, Stephen Crowley, good evening.
Good evening. Tell us a little bit about your petition tonight?
Yeah, we want to build up a detached garage, which is going to have a connecting to the house at one fifty-three River Road. We're looking for a setback from Trelane East, a six-foot variance in order to construct the twenty-by-twenty-four garage.
That all you have for right now?
Yeah, that's what we're requesting.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to open it up. We'll open it up to the public first and then we'll open it up to the members of the board for...
Thank you.
Action. That being said, moving forward, anybody wishing to speak on behalf of this petition, either in favor or against? Good evening, say your name.
Both my wife, my name is George Manuallian. Both my wife and I are in favor of this as it is going to be a nice, a very well-built structure, add aesthetic value to the neighborhood, and also it will increase the value of Mr. Paquette's property as well as all the neighboring homes in the area.
Thank you very much. Sir, if I could ask you just to sign in?
I did.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of this petition? Anyone in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. I'll open it up to the board. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You have a very nice property, Mr. Crowley, or the petition, and it's not always, it's not always the easiest thing to do. No one's here against it, so I think overall the neighborhood or the neighbors seem to be for the project, so I'm glad to hear that. But overall, I think, I think this is a good project and wish you the best of luck, sir.
Thank you, Van. Mark?
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions to the petitioner about the garage itself.
Yes?
So, there were no elevations submitted with the application as far as what I saw, and so I understand the garage dimensions, but is there a room over the garage?
No, not one at all.
Okay, and so this is strictly for two cars?
A two-car garage.
Great.
It's going to be a trest roof system, so there'll be no attic space whatsoever above it.
Okay, and then can you help me understand the driveway configuration? So, is this an existing driveway?
There's an existing driveway there.
That will remain?
And we're going to keep it. There's one section of the driveway which will be removed, two sections of concrete where we need to put the garage, and then the concrete will be poured back in the same exact area. So the driveway going into the garage is going to be the same driveway that exists today.
Okay, is there a driveway at the other end of the house?
Yes, there is.
So does that stay?
Yes, he uses both driveways.
Right, okay, so then the new driveway is going to remain and you're going to...
There's not a new driveway.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the, the other driveway that's in front of where the new garage is going?
Yes.
You're right, you're right. And so there really is no modification you need to do at the street edge then?
No.
Okay, great, all right.
He won't even be anywhere near the street with any of the structure, no excavation whatsoever?
It, it just appears from the site plan as though the driveway and the garage are aligned?
The garage is just slightly turned for just curb appeal, and there's two windows in the building that we're trying to keep the natural light going into, which are bedroom windows. That's why we proposed to keep it detached, because if we attached it to the building, we would be taken from the two windows that are in the bedrooms. So that's why we moved it away from the building, turned it on a slight angle, so the roof line does not affect the windows that are in the main house.
Got it, okay, all right. And I think where you've got a corner a lot here, I think that variance application makes sense because you do have a challenged kind of lot there for sure, so...
Thank you.
No further questions, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through, I do have a couple of follow-up questions from what Dennis proposed. As far as the garage is, the garage is concerned, we don't have any elevations, but what height, what's the height of the garage going, going to be?
The garage is going to be less than fourteen feet. It's going to be less than the height of the house.
Okay, and the other concern, question I had, well, I don't know, well, if you had the opportunity to read the comments from this DPD, what they provided regarding the...
No, none whatsoever.
Okay, because one of the things that they brought up was on the site plan, you have, even though it's a detached garage, you have a six-foot canopy area between the house and the, and the garage, and there's some question as to whether that would be constituted as a breezeway. I don't know, Patrick, can you, is there any way you can elaborate on that?
Well, it's just, it's actually just to connect to the house, because if we were to build a separate garage, we would have to be further away from the house, and then we'd be looking for more of a variance with it. The only reason I propose to attach the roof to the garage is to save us from having to move out ten feet, and it makes sense to do it that way, because the garage could be attached to the house, but it would be jammed in there, there was no question about it, and then we would have had to remove the whole driveway to get our elevations down, and that just would have been much more work.
And you're talking about the windows, taking out those windows as well?
And we saved the windows, but we actually just wanted a detached garage, but we would have had to keep ten feet from the house, and then by the time we add the twenty-foot to it, we're just keeping cringing on Trelane. So we propose to attach the house so we avoid having to keep the building ten feet from the other structure. So it is going to be attached to the main house.
Yeah, I'm looking at the comments, I see that those comments were actually from the building commissioner regarding the breezeway, the potential of it being constituted as a breezeway, at least from the buildings commissioner's perspective.
Okay.
So, I guess, I, you're going to have to work with the building commissioner anyways, but I guess one of the conditions, I mean, I don't know if it'd be a condition...
Did Sean have a question on the breezeway?
Yeah, well, he didn't...
So the building department did address the fact that it was a breezeway. It is considered, although they thought that despite it being a breezeway, it was still an attached garage.
Yeah.
And needing the variance still applied, whether it was attached or detached in terms of the front yard setback, which applies in either instance.
Yeah.
So the variance is still needed, but it seems that the building department didn't have an issue with it. The breezeway considered it an attached garage and didn't need that ten-feet setback.
Okay, yeah, that was the only real thing I wanted to address, but that'd be something you have to bring up with the building commissioner when...
I will speak to Sean, and, but that was the only reason we put that in, is because if we had to move out, like I said, the ten feet, we're further on to Trelane.
Yeah, no, it makes total sense, and you want to, and like you said, you want to save those two windows for, for...
Thank you.
For those bike purposes too, so, but otherwise, you know, I really had no problems with that, it was just a couple, a couple of things to bring up.
Thank you very much.
Since you didn't have a copy of the comments and maybe just wanted to make sure it get addressed, so...
Okay.
But, all right, I appreciate it, I wish you the best of luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, Mr. Paquette, if you want to... Sorry to make you go back and forth, but...
No problem, sir.
I just want to double check, because again, it looks like the petitioner was copied on, or Mr. Crowley was copied on, actually both were copied on the memo. I wonder if there's a reason why they're not sure if they got it?
So I was pretty sure I emailed the copy to the applicant, but I'm not sure.
But as far as you know, you didn't get these comments from the city that just kind of review some of the questions that are being asked by the building department?
Yeah, I didn't see those comments from the city, and I actually, before we signed up for the variance, I spoke to the building inspector, and I'm the one who explained to him the reason I wanted to attach the roof to the garage is because the same thing I said. It makes only sense because we would need more space to keep moving it out. It's not like we, we only wanted to put the garage in, so, but the zoning details the ten feet.
Yeah, my only concern was in the comments, they just wanted to make sure that the garage or the canopy doesn't obstruct those windows, because they're...
Oh, no, not what...
Those are emergency, in a sense, emergency exits.
Oh, no, no, the breeze, the, the connection to, from the garage to the house is going to be between the two windows, and that connection of the roof isn't going to be much larger than, you know, six feet, and there's probably twelve to sixteen feet between, the gable is twenty-four feet, the windows are close to the edge of the gable, so I would say there's fourteen feet at least between the two windows, and the roof is not going to be anywhere near to obstruct any view or fire regress in or out of those windows.
Okay, so, and again, I agree with my colleagues who have already followed up on the building department's comments, they don't have any issues, but again, the concern was just because we don't have any idea, we don't have any elevations, we don't know, usually what folks will do is submit some drawings of what the garage will look like and the breezeway and how it attaches to the house, so it's hard for me anyway to visualize. And then you're mentioning, the other question I have is, you're mentioning that the deck, I mean, the garage will be slightly angled, but on the plans, it looks like it's, you know, it's straight out to the...
No, it's slightly turned.
Okay, I'm just wondering how, if the driveway isn't going to be expanded, how does the, I guess, the second car get up the driveway and then angle into the drive, into the garage?
Well, the driveway is wide as the garage is, so we're only just turning the driveway here. The driveway is not becoming any larger.
Okay, so, again, on the plans, it looks like the garage is wider than the driveway, but that's based on the plans that you submitted, so I think...
We're just going to take the existing driveway and turn it, it's actually like two feet, and turn that driveway in to meet the front of the garage.
Okay, so I would just add that as a condition, or add a condition, that we get an updated site plan that actually shows the, the angling of the garage and the driveway, because again, it's...
We will have to propose as-built after the foundation is in for you, showing the exact location of the building, the driveway, and everything else.
Okay, yeah, so included in that would be an updated site plan that, we, we don't have to see it, but just to be submitted to the planning office when it's updated.
Most certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. So, Mr. Crowley, you've heard the wishes of the board. Would you like to take a moment to read a copy of the memo that was sent from the building department? Do you have an extra copy, Patrick? Yes, and Dennis, if you did not receive it via email, I think you should have the opportunity to briefly look at it with your client and ensure that you're, you're okay with everything now.
The doors are facing River Road. We're not putting the doors, we're not making another driveway on Trelane East. The driveway is on River Road, the garage is going to face River Road, the windows on the side of the garage are facing Trelane East. So there's not going to be, like, that would almost make a third driveway, no. We're, we're going right off the driveway on River Road.
Okay, well...
And that's what the print shows.
Yes, we just want, I just wanted to ensure that you understood what the comments from the city were.
Yeah.
And that we're, we're moving forward.
No, we're definitely not doing that, and...
Okay.
Okay.
The concerns of the boards have, you know, their concerns have been answered. One of my concerns was, as, as Mike, was that the, the attachment wasn't covering up any existing windows to prevent a digress, which is good to hear, so we do have the two conditions, that we will get an updated site plan and an updated elevation plan.
Okay.
And you can submit those directly to DPD, you don't need to come back to the board for that.
No problem.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, sorry, I apologize. One thing that was a part of the comments that wasn't brought up and had in my mind, I just forgot. Are there trees? There are some trees right on the side of the Trelan...
Yes.
Okay, what is the plan with those trees? Are they going to stay there?
We've already taken down the only tree that needed to be taken down, and that was taken down weeks ago.
Okay.
So those other two trees are staying there.
Okay.
There's more than two trees. There's two trees where the garage is, and he's got trees in the backyard, but they're all, those street trees are staying there.
Okay, that's, that was my, that was one of the concerns.
They're not removing anything else.
Okay, great, no, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or concern from the board? That being said, may I have a motion, please?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve ZB two thousand and seventeen dash thirty-nine. The petition is a variance. Applicant is Stephen Crowley on behalf of Adrian Paquette at one fifty-three River Road, and the variance is, the request is to propose to construct an attached garage and seek relief from the front yard setback under section five point one with the following two conditions, that an updated site plan be submitted to the planning office that shows the, the angling of the garage and the driveway, and that elevations be submitted to the planning office to show the, the height, width, and design of, of the garage itself.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, may I have a roll call?
Chairman, parrot?
Approve with conditions.
Member Paquette?
Approve with conditions.
Member Callio?
Approved with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approve with conditions.
Member Briere?
Approve with conditions.
Mr. Crowley, you've been, you've been approved unanimously, or wish you the best of luck with your project?
Thank you for your opinion.
Thank you. You're welcome, good luck. Moving forward with our next petition, ZB two thousand seventeen dash forty for a special permit, Acme Sign Corporation on behalf of Aiken Twenty-three LLC at three Aiken Avenue. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing to hear all interested parties relative to an application prepared by Acme Sign Corporation on behalf of Aiken Twenty-three LLC for the installation and internal illumination of signage. The applicant is seeking special permit approval under section six point three of the city of Lowell zoning ordinance and any other relief that is required. The property is a neighborhood business, a zoning district. Good evening, sir.
Evening, board, my name is Brian Brinkers, and I'm the president of Acme Sign Company in Peabody, on behalf of our customers, Laundromax, who's recently purchased a building at three Aiken Avenue, and is asking the board if we can have approval for installation of signage and, in addition to the signage itself, but to approve the illumination of the signage.
Okay.
I'm fairly certain that the drawings show pretty much all of what is to be done, including sizes of the signs, locations, any technical information, I'd be happy to answer questions from you folks.
Okay, thank you. This time I'd like to open up the public hearing portion. Anyone wishing to speak? In favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak? In opposition? 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 That portion of the public hearing is now closed. We'll open it up to the board members for comments. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to have some clarifications made on the application. There were a number of comments made by the building department in particular that you might be familiar with. So the site plan shows awnings that are remaining, yet the elevations don't have them on the, they're not shown at all, so which is it, are they staying or are they going?
Well, any of the old awnings that were on the building in the past have recently been removed. Building now has no awnings whatsoever. The ones that were removed were over sidewalk. We are proposing two awnings to be located, one in the back of the building, in the parking lot, and one on the side of the building, which is, also faces a parking area, but nothing over public way. And each of the awnings is intended to cover entrance ways.
That makes a lot of sense, okay, I'm glad you're doing that. And then the signage itself is internally illuminated with a kind of a bar behind it for the wiring and controls, I imagine, that the letters come off of?
Correct, we call it raceway.
Yep, and that's being bolted to the block of breakfast facade?
Correct, yes.
LED lighting being used?
Yes.
And how much of a projection off the building? I don't think it's dimensioned on the plan here. Are we looking at about a six-inch projection or what's it?
That would be my guess, the letters are typically three inches, and then, you know, I think the most commonly used is a three-and-a-half inch raceway, so...
Three and a half total, so six and a half total, maybe?
It's my guess in that area, but we're not the manufacturers, so I don't really know, these are coming from New York. But typically they're, the letters are three inches, which is a lot thinner than the old style with neon illumination.
No, no, that...
LED allows us.
Yep, that, to me, doesn't constitute an overhanging sign on the right-of-way. Patrick, is that correct? That one, yeah, right. So this is a nice improvement. Are you also painting the facade? Do you know if that's, because it appears as though the building...
If it's in the drawing, then, then I believe that's in their, their future plans to paint, partially paint, anyway.
How about the hours of operation? Do we know what those are?
I'm not sure, but I believe they're open twenty-four.
Wow, okay, so it'd be looking to have this signage on all night long?
Unless it was important to the board that it not be illuminated during specific hours, I would, I would say that the owners of the Laundromax would like to have it illuminated rather than not. At the same time, you know, they have concerns, and, you know, if it was an issue, I'm sure that they would be accommodating that.
Well, I would suggest if we were to allow it to be twenty-four-seven, that we have a six-month review period as a condition, just to revisit this and see if there's any concerns that have arisen in the six-month period.
That's fair enough, right.
All right, I have no further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, my, my question, when I, he says twenty-four hours, is, that's the first time that this is, that's, that's something like that's come up as in the sign before the board and since I've been on, so, it, otherwise, it seems fine to me. I know, I saw some comments from the building department, and there are a couple of, like, minor typographical things as far as, like, the address being wrong on all the elevation drawings and stuff like that, which I, I mean, I'm sure could be easily amended.
I've come across that before in Lowell.
Yeah.
Fire department calls it one, engineering calls it another.
I mean, if it's, if it's a concern with the board, I don't know, I would have...
It's technically three, three Aiken.
Yeah, I mean, my, 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 my first thought was about the hours illumination, if we do twenty-four hours, just if it's possible, the name of the business be illuminated for a portion of time instead of all the other extra, you know, pre-dry laundry, drop-off service, all that stuff, kind of like lessen the blow a little bit, but, but I, I'll, I'll go with what Dennis says, and maybe we can try and do a six-month review and then figure it out from there.
Sure, that's...
I'm just trying to see if we can...
And then if there's a situation, we can look at it again, right?
Yeah, well, we'll figure it out from there, yeah, so, but otherwise, everything's, everything seems fine to me, and I wish you the best of luck, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Patrick, do we know if the, this is separate from the sign application, but do we know if this business has a permit or is licensed to operate twenty-four hours a day? Do we have to just assume that?
Yeah, I would just assume so, yeah.
I actually, I don't have a big concern about it being lit twenty-four-seven if it's, if those are the hours, because both sides of that building face, one of them faces the street and a vacant bank building, and the other one faces Vic's sandwich shop, so neither of the, neither side of the building actually faces any residential properties. There are some at different angles from the property, but not directly across the street from either side, but I, I agree with the six-month review to see if there are any complaints about, about lighting. I guess I would just like to ask Patrick if you could follow up with the appropriate departments to find out if they're just opening the business twenty-four hours without the proper license and, and permit, but the, the, I know you're not the owner of the business, if you can relay this message to them, I think they've done a great job renovating and reopening that property. It was a, an old butcher shop that was in business for over a hundred years, and I think when it left, a lot of people were concerned about what was going to go in there, and, again, it's a laundromat, but I've, I've been by the location and it's been totally renovated, all the equipment in there is brand-new. The facility looks very clean and well-lit and well-staffed, so I think it will be helpful to the residents of that neighborhood who may not otherwise have those facilities at home to take care of their laundry, so...
It's good to hear, thank you.
So again, I just agree with the, the condition of the six-month review, and separate from that, Patrick, if you could just follow up on our behalf... that, Patrick, if you could just follow up on our behalf or on my behalf, unless anyone objects to the licensing of the facility. Thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mike, Ben?
Three, Mr. Chairman. You know, I like the look and design of the sign, and it makes sense to me. The building's -- it's been rehabbed, so it looks amazing. You know, like my colleagues, I don't have an issue with the sign being lit 24 hours a day, as long as the business is open all night as well. You know, but I also agree with Mr. McCarthy and my colleagues that we should have a six-month review, just in case if it's a burden or intrusive to the neighbors.
Right, right.
But, you know, overall, I think this is a good sign and good -- I'm glad to see another business going in there, so.
Great, thank you.
Wish you the best of luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Mark?
Well, I'm an old Centerville guy, so it's great to see that building being utilized once again. And what you've done to the facade is a positive improvement for the neighborhood. Sorry to see Lowell provision gone. I'd much rather prefer a nice porterhouse steak, but we need washers and dryers in Lowell Centerville, too. I think it'll be a great benefit to the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mark. So that being said, you hear the wish of the Board, six-month administrative review as regards to the 24-hour lighting. If we have any issues or complaints or concerns from neighborhoods or Centerville Neighborhood Committee, we'll bring those to your attention. Just if you could relate to the owner of the building, that the condition of -- I'd like to have a condition that the lighting is approved 24 hours, as long as the business is open. So if he goes to a 12-hour or 16-hour, then the administrative review will come into play.
Okay.
Because we will have a timeline on illumination lights on that business as we have throughout the city.
Right.
And I do concur with Mark. The provision, as we called it growing up, was an icon for a lot of neighborhood kids, and it served that city, part of the city, very well. Seeing that building being utilized and another business coming into Centerville, it's nice to see things stay here.
That's great.
So to the owner, wish him the best of luck. Any further comments or questions from the Board?
Just a quick question to Patrick, Mr. Chairman. Pat, because, I mean, because the elevations of the schematics that we provided has the wrong address on it, is that something that we can just take note of it, that it's -- the address concerned is 3 Aiken Ave. and not 23 Aiken Ave., and just not -- they don't have to submit amended plans or anything, or, I mean, it's just a typographical error, so it's like... Okay, so we'll just take note that that's -- the address is 3 Aiken Ave. and not 23 Aiken Ave., so, okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? That being said, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, through you, I'd like to make a motion to approve ZB 2017-40, a special permit for Acme Sign Corp. on behalf of Aiken 23 LLC for the property located at 3 Aiken Avenue. And the application is for a special permit approval under section 6.3 of the City of Lowell zoning ordinance for the installation and internal illumination of signage, with the following condition, that the planning office conduct a six-month administrative review of the lighting in regard to the 24-hour operation.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
That being said, the roll call, please.
Chairman Perrin?
Approved with condition.
Member Pec?
Approved with conditions.
Member Calia?
Approved with condition.
Member Callahan?
Approved with condition.
Member McCarthy?
Approved with conditions.
Member Brier?
Approved with conditions.
Congratulations, sir. You've been approved. Best of luck.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Moving on to our next petition, ZB 2017-41 for a variance at 135-155 Chumsford Street LLC. 135 Chumsford Street. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing to all interested persons relative to an application by 135-155 Chumsford Street LLC, seeking dimensional variances at the above-listed property. The subject property is vacant and is approximately 22,427 square feet. The application proposes to construct a two-unit dwelling structure on a lot to be established along Ware Street that contains approximately 6,076 square feet and require variances for lot area per dwelling unit, lot area and frontage. The project requires variance relief under section 5.1 of the Lowell zoning ordinance and any other relief required. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. If I could, before I start--
the petitioner, 135 to 155 Chumsford Street LLC, who is the owner of the property that has an address of 135 Chumsford Street. With me tonight is Sean Gannam, who's the manager of the LLC, Mark O'Hara, who is our project engineer, and my son, James, who has been working with me on zoning matters, so you'll probably be seeing some of him in the future. As the petition, and as the notice states, we're seeking dimensional variances to allow the construction of a two-family residential dwelling in the rear portion of the lot abutting which abouts Ware Street. And it would be our intention to establish a new lot. The new lot would contain 6,076 square feet, and if the variance is granted, then we would submit an A in our plan for approval by the planning department. The lot at 135 Chumsford Street is split-zoned. The front portion contains about 16,391 square feet in its own NB, and the rear portion along Ware Street is own TTF, and that contains the 6,076 square feet. So our entire site is located within the TTF zone. Just a little bit of history, and I think I've attached some of it to the application, but proposed lot on Ware Street is a combination of two lots that were originally established by a plan recorded with the Middlesex North District Registry in Plan Book 30, Plan 9, back in 1913. So these lots are really old, and I've attached a copy of that plan to the -- to my application. The dimensions of the proposed lot on Ware Street are exactly the same as those two lots combined together that were established in 1913. And so I would consider this a pre-existing, non-conforming lot, and therefore not subject to today's dimensional requirements. What we're really seeking is two variances, not three, because I think under the TTF zone, a single-family home needs 6,000 square feet, and every other -- any other use is also 6,000 square feet. So we don't need a variance for the lot size, because ours required a six, but we do need frontage and the lot area per dwelling unit. As to the lot frontage, the proposed lot has 79.87 feet, and the current requirement under the 2004 amendment is 80 feet. So we're just very, you know, just missing by a lot, a little. And as to the area per dwelling unit, the proposed lot provides for 3,038 square feet, and under the existing zoning that was established in 2004, we're required to have 4,000 square feet. But prior to the zone change in 2004, the lot would have satisfied all the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and I've given you a copy that I gave you tonight of the zoning ordinance in effect up to 2004. That's the 2000 amendment. And it would be a two-family zone. We would require 60 feet of frontage and 3,000 square feet per dwelling unit. So if we came in here prior to the zone change, this would have been an approved lot. In addition, I've attached Exhibit A to the -- to my application, which shows a breakdown of all the other lots located on Ware Street. Most of them are two, three families, and the land area per dwelling unit runs between two -- one and 2,000 square feet. So we are well above that. So it's my feeling that because of the age, shape, and size of the proposed lot, the request would not be detrimental to the neighborhood, and it would not derogate from the intent of zoning. It is a two-family zone. We intend to submit, develop a two-family home. We'd ask your approval. We had to answer any questions that this Board might have.
Thank you, Counselor. That being said, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? Favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is closed. We'll now open it up to the Board for comments. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see the relief that you're requesting, Mr. Flood, and it's disapparent to be minimal at that, you know, it's minimal relief that you're seeking, especially with the frontage. I mean, you're talking not much to go with, so. I'm generally in favor of the proposal, the lot being the shape of what it is, and it being pretty much vacant, like, nothing in there.
I think it's the only thing on that side of the street that's vacant, so finish it off.
And I was actually surprised, I mean, driven by that on Chumsford Street many times, and I didn't realize that the lot was included in that back area that's on Ware Street, and I was surprised to find out when you submitted this that that whole lot is the way it is, the way, the shape, the shape it is.
It is own TTF, too.
Yes, exactly, so. But it's a very well, no, it's a very well-put-together project. I'm well in favor, and I wish you the best of luck, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm generally in favor of the application. It's a vacant lot. I drove by there this weekend, and it would be nice to have a dwelling there to kind of match the rest of the street. You're providing off-street parking, which is, in that area, the parking is very limited. Are the spa -- are the -- is the parking stacked on each side?
Yeah, there's two driveways.
Right, one on each side, but it's stacked.
The reason I gave you that plan is that one of the comments we received said that the plan should be revised to put into the parking, but I guess Pat says you have that. So they're both, they're nine by 40 feet, so there's plenty of room for two cars on each side. I pointed that out on the plan.
So, yeah, I think it makes sense for that stretch of road and getting the cars off the street on each side. I have a question about the rest of 135 Chumsford.
He's working on it. Got commercial development.
Yeah, I mean, that's been, I've lived in Lowell for over about 25 years. I think that lot's been--
Vacant.
-- vacant all that time, so I wonder--
Working on a plan for a commercial development in the front.
Great. So was it recently purchased by this group, or?
Five years ago.
Okay.
But we'd like to get this taken care of first, so then all we know, we have the neighborhood business zone left, so.
Yeah, I mean, I've always wondered why, I mean, I know it's, you know, on the edge of a couple of different neighborhoods, commercial, residential, industrial, across the street, but you would think with MACOM expanding and the new laundromat that went in there, and either providing commercial space on the first floor and maybe housing above, that's a lot that would be primed to be redeveloped, so. And then people wander to Butcher Bar there, you know?
He's like, "Oh."
Or Frankness, whatever it's called now, or-- And I just have one other question. How come your son isn't wearing a tie like you?
He doesn't like them.
He doesn't like them?
He does.
Well, I think if he wants to remain in your--
Talk to him, Dennis.
I think if he wants to remain in your office, he may need to update his wardrobe.
Absolutely. We'll have to change.
I don't have any other questions or out-of-line comments, Mr. Perrin.
As always, thank you. Mike, Ben?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this petition makes sense, you know, it's just a vacant lot, so I'm in favor. It's, you know, I think it's going to be a good project for the city, something going there, so. Thank you, Mr. Flood.
Thank you, Ben. Mark?
I think it's a welcome project. Best of luck.
So, as you've said, Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I have a couple of questions. The elevation that you presented is strictly the front elevation. The lot has quite a bit of topography on it.
Is it what?
Quite a bit of topography on it, so you have a grade change from 75 to 72 across the front.
Mm-hmm.
So you have stairs getting into the house on one side that aren't shown on the plan.
I will call the engineer right after you can answer those.
I'd like to see that revised and have those stairs--
Can you put it on the plan?
So we can understand that there's actually going to be stairs added to the--
Front.
-- front porch, I imagine.
Mm-hmm.
I'm also not happy about a lot of exposed foundation wall, and I'd like to see a condition, if I can get the support of the rest of the Board, to have no more than three feet of exposed foundation wall on the structure. We don't have the other elevations to understand if that's your intent, but I'm a little worried with the amount of grade change on the site, that we could see a lot of exposed concrete. The application, you have a note on here about green space or open space that I don't think is correct, usable open space provided 3,617 square feet. I don't quite see how that would be possible with the driveway--
There's more than 500, yeah.
And the way, Patrick, that open space is tabulated. You have the setback of 10, five, so I'm questioning if that's even close to reality there, because isn't it, it's not allowed on the, well, I don't know, you tell me, but does that make sense to you, Patrick, that that would be accurate?
I know what you're saying. We need 500. Mark might be able to answer that question, but who's the engineer here?
Hi, for the record, Mark O'Hara, O'Hara Engineering. I guess that depends on the definition of open space. Maybe the way we calculated isn't the way it is listed in the regulations. 500 square feet is required. I believe that's per dwelling unit, and so the way I interpreted it was anything that was not a structure or pavement. So the remainder of the lot minus the house, that's not how it's calculated? Okay.
I think you have to redo that calculation, update that. I think you will be in excess of 500.
Okay, yeah, we can--
But I just think that we need to have some accuracy in the plan. Is that correct, Patrick?
Yeah, that's right. It's just the five feet from property lines.
Oh, okay, five, okay, yep.
And then obviously no permeable surfaces.
Thank you. And then the elevation, so the building is a two-and-a-half-story structure?
Yeah.
So there's windows on the third floor, and it looks like there's probably a stair that goes to the third level? So the question would be, do you have habitable rooms on the third level planned? I know that you talked about three bedrooms.
I don't think so. I think there's probably going to be attic space. I hadn't heard of anything going up there.
Well, I think this is a very dense neighborhood, and so I'm a little nervous about having, you know, five cars per unit kind of there, so I'm a little, I think that we have two off-street parking spaces and maybe two parking spaces in front of the structure. Three cars would probably be what you would expect.
Mm-hmm.
And so I don't, I think I want to make a condition, if possible, that these units are three-bedroom units, as depicted on the plans, if that's acceptable?
There are three bedrooms on the plan, yeah.
And that's what, so I'm just suggesting that we don't have a condition where we end up with four bedrooms or five bedrooms per unit.
I understand, and I think I stated that in my narrative, too, that there'd be three bedrooms, yeah.
Yes, you did. But I'm looking at the elevation. I know there's windows up there, and I know that could be converted to five-bedroom units, maybe, and I'm just nervous about that, so I'd like to just make a condition that this is--
There's storage space, if you intend, so.
Being supported by the other members. And I think that's--
No, there's no living in the third, that's just attic. Just an attic, that's what.
Perfect. Okay. I think we're in agreement. So it's just to update the site plan to show the stairs required and update the calculation of the open space, and then a condition, if possible, that this would be approved as two, three-bedroom units.
Correct. No problem.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other comments or concerns from the Board? So, Counsel, we have several conditions.
The comments?
No, conditions.
Okay.
You can read them.
I just want to summarize the conditions that-- I just wanna summarize the, the conditions that I heard, and just to add. So revised site plan that, uh, will show where the stairs are located and re, revising the open space calculation.
Correct.
The condition, uh, well, for, as far as the elevations, a complete elevation, so, um, each left and right side and rear elevations be submitted, 'cause we just received the front and the floor plan. Unless I'm missing something, but...
If that's what was submitted and that's what you need, that's not a problem.
Yeah, I mean, I assume you have the, the left and right and rear elevations. For some reason, it wasn't part of the, the package.
Okay.
Um, the third condition was, uh, what Dennis mentioned in regard to, um, uh, conditioning no more than three feet of exposed foundation wall. And then the fourth condition is that, um, based on the plans and the elevations, that the two dwellings remain three-bedroom dwellings.
Correct.
And I'll read those back in with the motion.
So we have four, four conditions, Counselor?
Correct.
Everyone's good with that?
Fine.
Any other comments or concerns from any other board? That being said, may I have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, through you, I'd like to make a motion to approve ZB two thousand and seventeen dash forty-one variance for one thirty-five to one fifty-five, I'm sorry, the applicant is one thirty-five to one fifty-five Chumsford Street LLC for the property located at one thirty-five Chumsford Street. Hold on just one second.
Just, um, one other, one other condition is the address being named as Ware Street as it was in the...
Yeah, we'll go to the engineers once we go for
The engineer's office.
for building permit, we have to do that.
Yeah, I'll have them condition that. All right, pardon the interruption, I'll reread the motion. Mr. Chairman, through you, I'd like to make a motion to approve ZB two thousand and seventeen dash forty-one a variance for one thirty-five to one fifty-five Chumsford Street LLC for the property located at one thirty-five Chumsford Street. Uh, the applicant is, uh, seeking a variance to the dimensional requirements of the subject property, with the proposal to construct a two-unit dwelling with variances for lot area per dwelling unit, lot area and frontage under section five point one of the zoning cor, code, with the following conditions: That a revised site plan be submitted to include the location of the stairs and to, um, recalculate the open space, that no more than three feet of exposed, uh, foundation wall on the property, submit a complete, uh, set of elevations, and to, based on the application and the narrative, the dwellings will remain three-bedroom units each.
Thank you. Mike, may I have a second?
Second motion.
May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve with conditions?
Member Peck?
Approve with conditions.
Member Palio?
Approved with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approve with conditions.
Member Briere?
Approved with conditions.
Thank you very much.
Counselor, you've been approved.
I'll take him out and get him a bow tie now.
Very well, we wish you the best of luck on the property. Uh, moving forward with other business, we have no minutes for approval, and we have notices of the two thousand and eighteen calendar, which were receipt of via email. That's correct? Any other business?
I know that's all, I guess I would just want, um, confirmation that the two thousand and eighteen schedule looked good to everyone and could be approved.
Looks fine, fine by me, and I believe, um, most members in comment that via email.
Okay.
That being said, no other business for tonight's meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Through, uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
You have a second.
Second motion.
Meeting's adjourned, have a good night.